Bring a contractor's yard. There are still an ordinance for contractor yard, but this was something that we put in there to give them an opportunity to register for. And they went on for a couple of years and then they extended it. Now it's time to.
Okay. I've got seven o'clock for a call to the order and have staff to the place of allegiance. Place of allegiance.
To the land, the United States of America, a pure republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How about approval of the agenda? Anything to add or?
I just want to mention that in your packets that I sent on your desk tonight, we do have the final audit, financial audit. We don't have the bound copies yet, but once we get them, we'll make sure they're available to you. But I wanted to give you a copy of what it was. It hasn't changed much since the draft.
Okay. Anything else? Approval of the agenda?
Second?
Second. All in favor? And public forum, public comment on non-agenda items. One thing I do have, I have a thank you note from Sheriff King to the select board. Thank you for taking the time to meet with me last Monday. I appreciate the collaboration we share. Bill King. So I will give this to. There you go. And public forum, Jack, I think you had something?
Yes, yes, I do.
Is that on, Jack?
Yeah.
I.
It's on.
It's on. I wanted to announce some good news that as you probably all know, there's a vacancy on the school board and nobody's officially running. Well, we found a candidate who's willing to run as a write-in. And you may all know him. He's your former town manager, Todd Shea. He's been, I think, either been volunteered or has volunteered, combination of both. And so he's anxious to get started and I would. I'm working on getting all the necessary votes, write-in votes, and I wouldn't object to having all of yours also if you're so inclined. And that's one thing. The second thing is, oh, supplemental to that, June 8th, as you all know, is a voting date, but I think that absentee balloting starts this week. So we're trying, I'm trying to get the word out early on so that absentee balloters and you know, everybody who can spread the word to family and friends also gets the word as well.
Make sure they get his spelling correct when they write it down.
Yes, I have put together a document that I'm sending out. Secondly, as you know, I have not been terribly excited about the direction that the planning board was headed in in discussing the residential growth ordinance and the proposed changes to allocation of the 40 annual permits. And I think I sent you all a memo, one-page memo, I believe I did. And I followed it up with a six-page memo with much more detail. And I'd like to send it off to Keith and have him forward it to you. There are some real issues there. Fundamentally, I don't think they have a clear vision of where the town is and where it's headed. And that's supposed to be the guiding light for the planning board. And so I've proposed a, an approach to deal with this that involves you folks as well. So I just wanted to give you a heads up.
So Jack, if you sent out a memo, I haven't received anything.
Okay, I, okay, maybe I just sent it to the planning board. I was, yeah, I'll send that out and then I followed it up with a six-page, much more detailed memo and see if you agree or not as to the points that I try to make and the rationale that I have. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Anything else? Yep?
Yes, there'll be discussion at the end. You'll tell me more and I'll be looking for some votes, hopefully from the budget board there.
Okay. Anything else under public forum? Then approve the minutes of April 26.
I think a motion we approve is submitted.
Motion's made, approved. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. All in favor? All right. Any committee and board reports? Jack, when is the RSU public meeting? Isn't that this week?
Yes. Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I think.
Tomorrow night, seven o'clock at KES. And managers report landscaping RFP.
Yes, just to let you know, I had sent out an RFP several weeks ago to a variety of folks seeking some landscaping expertise for mulching and weeding of our, of our grounds here. Unfortunately, did not receive any requests back. Today I had a meeting with Luke Roulette from Roulette Construction based on some observations of the grounds as well as some issues that we still have here in the, in the building. I mentioned this to him and the original landscapers will be back to replace the trees out front because they did not survive the winter. And they will be providing me a cost to do the weeding and mulching for this year when they come down, hopefully for the, for the spring when they replace those trees. So we'll get it done somehow. I'm a little, I think perhaps maybe my RFP was a little too late in the process. I think it's something that will have to go out perhaps in the fall to try to get somebody to line up for the spring work. I know a lot of landscapers and they're all very busy, so I think that's probably why we didn't get a response. The, just to let you know, and I'll probably turn it over to Velma, she knows far more about this than I do, but the benches and the time capsule, I'll talk about the benches. We received our last bench, has now been placed here at the meeting room, outside the meeting room, if you didn't notice it on the way in. We are now in the process of doing the plaques. We'll get the plaques done and hopefully we'll have it timed in a way that when the capsule is placed, we can have the dedication at the same time. But Velma knows a little bit more about the time capsule.
Okay. I took all of the information up to the gentleman from the Masons. And we are working, and he was going to get back to me, on doing this the Sunday before Memorial Day, when the Historical Society has our Memorial Day program at 11 o'clock Sunday, the day before, at the fire station, that perhaps we could do the time capsule here that same afternoon, say around 1:00. That would give us.
That's two weeks, right?
Yeah. That would give us time to, you know, anybody who is at the fire station who would like to come down after the Memorial Day program, after the Memorial Day program, to be able to, to do both programs on the same day and get it done. But I haven't heard back from him, so I will check with him because he is having someone from, I guess, the main office come down to help when we put in the time capsule. As soon as I have that final information, I'll send it to everyone.
The next thing I have is the Gilliam Field status. Obviously, you, at the budget meeting, we, we had a big spreadsheet as to the intents that were laid out by Sports Fields Incorporated. I went ahead and instructed Sports Fields to do the sports supply fertilizing and grub reduce, reduction that will be done in next Monday, I believe is when they'll be down to, to take care of that for us. The rest of it is on hold. I have not heard yet from the Little League representative as to what impact, if any, they're going to have financially on, on, on the project or on the, on the field. So I'll keep you apprised as we move through the process. And then we'll have to make some decisions as we get further on, down the, down the Finally, for me, on the manager's report, just the, again, I alluded a little bit to Luke being here today. I'd asked him specifically to come down for, for two issues. The first issue is the rec department was indicating that there was some, still some slight odor in the ladies' room, in the, in the meeting room bathroom. So he's going to have the plumbing folks come by again just to perhaps smoke bomb that and see if we have any leakage, maybe replace the wax rings on the, on the toilets and see if that takes her, takes care of it. When we went in today, we did not smell anything, but that doesn't mean that inadvertently it doesn't come back from time to time. We haven't had it any other place in the building since they found the problems associated with the bathroom that's in the middle of here. So he'll follow up on that. And then the other thing I had was there's an area heating, electric heating system that goes on the, coming in the main lobby that is supposed to just take the chill off that main lobby. It's just basically an electrical unit and it has failed. And it's been several months that it's been failed and they haven't come back to replace it. So I, I made sure that he understood that we needed to get that done too. And anything else that comes up, we obviously have a year warranty here. We want to make sure we get everything and anything identified and wrapped up before that sunset, so.
That door was open on that fire extinguisher too.
Well, I'm sure that somebody may have touched it. I don't know why it would not.
Probably one of the kids, maybe?
Yeah. It would not be locked because there's no sense in having it locked.
How's, how's everything with like the security system and all of that? Everything's all good with that or no issues at all?
Seems to be working fine. I, you know, initially we had some bugs with it and it was more about, you know, people at least getting a little more comfortable with the system. They are now comfortable with it, so we haven't had any false alarms, so to speak. So I believe everything's working as it should.
Anything else on the manager's report? And business, business hours for voter registration.
Yes, we have a request from the town clerk in reference to the modification of the business hours. It's been identified in the, in your packet. Again, we'd like to waive some evening hours and as provided in the past that we've done. And we'd need some sort of action, motion and second to make that happen.
Okay, we've never had a problem with this and no one has ever, has ever come forward that they had a problem with any of these hours? I mean, we've been doing, how many years did we do this? Do we have a motion on this?
Yeah, some.
I guess the question I have, why don't we just change it to, why can't we just change it to normal business hours instead of having to do this every single night?
I don't, go ahead.
This is statutory.
It is, oh, all right.
This is the same exact thing that the registrar has to hold certain business hours for some evening hours and less waiting by the board.
Oh, okay.
All right. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
No.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. All in favor? All right. Something for us to sign on that or is it?
Yep.
And a renewal for the food truck application, tasting main food truck. That truck was there last year at Hamlock Grove Campground. Food was very good.
Yes, we have a request for the food truck again. I've provided a bunch of documentation, some samples within your, your packet. We would now be seeking approval.
I make a motion, we approve the taste main food truck application.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? Second, all in favor?
I have a second.
Whoa, wait a minute.
The question mark, Keith. Didn't, wasn't there an issue with the food truck at Bentley's? We had them stop at like 11:00 PM or something?
Correct. But I think the ordinance indicates how long they can be open.
As long as it, something dictates.
Correct.
Yeah, to Jason's point, they, they should understand what it is because right now it looks like they don't know what it is.
We will make sure they know.
That's a good catch.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
All right. So is that, was that seconded?
Yeah.
Phil seconded that. All right. No other questions? Then all in favor?
Well, I have the quick claim deed for the property that we sold at 1226 Portland Road. I would need approval, motion and a second to sign the deed.
I make a motion, we approve the quick claim deed dated 10th of May 2001.
Motion, do we have a, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second? Any questions on that?
Tom, is it, is it corrected? You picked up something earlier.
Yeah, we picked up the, Tom picked up the part that it was actually tax-acquired as opposed to.
As they saw it seem, as the buyer seen us?
Yes, I sent a copy to him.
Is he satisfied with it?
No other questions? All in favor? Do we have the license to the food truck too? Do we have to sign that?
No, you don't have to sign that.
All right. Approval of annual town meeting warrant, but we're going to be talking about some budget items before we approve that. Is that correct?
That is correct. At your last, at your last business meeting, there was a request by the fire chief to add an additional per diem personnel during the day shift, which would be, would be 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week. So he was seeking just additional shift coverage for the, for that particular time. There was quite a bit of discussion at the, at the meeting, selectmen and the budget board. And there was a thought process at the, at the end of that, that, that it would be wise to perhaps keep it as a separate warrant article and allow the chief to have some discussion at the town meeting floor to see if he has support to add this. So right now it would be in your, in your warrant, it would be Article 20 and it would say, shall town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $87,836 to add a per diem fight-to-fire EMT day shift to cover 12 hours a day, seven days a week? And then this will provide additional day coverage where the town experiences most of its call volume. So in essence, what we're seeking, or what he's seeking here would be $87,836 to, to do that coverage.
Well, I got some questions on the whole, the whole thing, so I'll wait until we're talking specifically before we.
I just wouldn't mind making a comment. I wasn't at the, I wasn't at the budget meeting. I zoomed in, but I kind of kept my mouth shut just because this has always been a gray area for me. Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. How about now? My light's bad, so. Probably. Hear me now? I didn't speak up over the Zoom meeting just because I know this is a gray area for me, but I mean, I know this isn't a lot of money, but I, I really, really, really want to stress that the whole point of hiring this paramedic fire chief, and we sold this to the town, was that we were going to get some sort of backfilling from him on vacant shifts and, and maybe days that we were light-staffed or maybe even that, that third-person position. I just, I feel like we haven't even given that an opportunity or that we haven't even really experienced that at all from him. I, I, I know this isn't a lot of money and it really doesn't add up to pennies on the mill rate, but I, I just feel like, I mean, I don't want to feel like we misled the public and not gave it a chance to, I don't feel like we're getting what we said we were going to get from him, I guess is what I'm trying to say. I mean, that was the whole point of a paramedic chief. And I, and I was a, I was a huge advocate of the previous chief not getting anything. So, not to say it bluntly, but I, I just, I think, I think he ought to maybe be told, look, we hired you as a paramedic with the, with the vision that you were going to be that support to the per diem staff as being a paramedic hire. And I just don't feel like we're, we're getting that from you. I mean, that's my two cents, but.
That's a good two cents. How many days a week does he work? Three?
He works 30 hours a week.
He works 30, so.
So there's a possibility in his shift, because he's a full-timer at Saco, obviously changes around.
I mean, that was, you know, we changed the requirement to be certified to do that. So that was really one of the biggest things why we went that route.
I, I mean, I will say, I worked for the fire department, I mean, full disclosure, but, and we are short-staffed. The call company does not exist anymore. The people do not come from home anymore. We, Arundel is at this tough position right now where the, the, you know, the number of residents and the number of calls is at that real, I mean, we're close to being to that point where yes, we're, I mean, at some point in the near future, we are going to need some more help. But I also feel is that that was our sale for this paramedic fire chief was to get that support. I would much rather have a conversation with him saying, look, if you're giving us 30 to 32 hours a week, I mean, you might have to get on that ambulance and now it's 32 hours to support the fire department. I mean, that's, that's what we sold the public on.
I, I don't think there's an objection there for him to do that. I, I haven't, I haven't, I've had that conversation and there's no objection for him using his expertise as a paramedic. I think the issue we have would be when he's available and how it works into the day shift in terms of, of coverage when he's there. That would be the, the thing there. You know, if I can be blunt in, in this whole process, I certainly will. I'm not in favor of this at this particular juncture. And the reason I'm not is the timing of it. For me, it's, it was, for me, it's all about, if this was something that needed to be added to the budget and discussed, it should have been done from the beginning of our process, not at the end of the process. And so I, I'm a little troubled by that. Do I think there's perhaps some discussion that needs to be taken in terms of whether it's a per diem shift or another full-time shift? Yes, I do. But that discussion should happen long before we're sitting here trying to make some sort of final decision as to what we're going to do with the position.
I don't, I don't necessarily agree that just adding per diem slots is going to solve the problem that we have in Arundel. I think we need to have a long-term fix and I think the money should be allocated smartly to, to make that happen at the right time.
I don't think per diem shift's going to cover it.
In all honesty, every single department around us is short-staffed, even at the per diem level. So you could, we could tell the public that we're going to have 20 per diem slots in Arundel and I guarantee you, we're not going to be able to fill. It's not the right solution, I really don't.
I'm not objectionable to having the discussion on it and, and talking about it. I've laid my, I've made my position quite clear in terms of what I think that the York County Chiefs should be doing, what we should be doing as a whole. We have only a limited amount of pool people for this per diem stuff. I think per diems should, whether, whether we agree in the future that every per diem gets paid a certain price and we agree to it as a entire group, I'm okay with that as well, as long as we can use the, the pool accordingly. But, and then have the per diems provide who they really want to work for and lay that out. But the argument that I was getting from, from the chief was that these folks really want to be able to, to have these day shifts and then he feels that he needs that coverage. And so this would be a win-win. Well, I don't think per diem should be telling us when we need to be having it work. I mean, we have a shift open, see if we can fill it and we go from there, so.
And I can promise you that the argument that's we're busier during the day and not as busy at night, you're going to get way more per diem people to sign up for the night shift because we're not as busy at night as we are going to be. So that argument to me, it's, it's not like it's going to be a matter of everybody's fighting to have the day shifts, but if they know it's busier during the day, trust me, they're not going to sign up for the shifts for the busier at break.
Now, so 30, am I, do I have this right? 30 hours a week, we actually have three people. We have a full-timer, we have a per diem, 30 hours a week, the chief is there.
Well, it depends on when he's coming in to do his work. I mean, he could be coming in at 5:00 at night or 6:00 at night if he's off and comes in.
But there are 30 hours a week.
There's 30 hours that he potentially could be used on a medical call or a fire call. One of the things he talked about with the budget board and the selectmen was that if we had the extra per diem, that would give them, that would be, you'd meet the minimum standard for four, fully two in, two out, ready to go if we had a fire, so.
But we don't always have, to almost point, we don't always have three people there on days.
No.
Right. And what he's looking for is to have always have three people there on days.
That's correct.
Who answered the calls today of that woods fire down on the river road?
It was the per diem staff with the support of area talents. I mean, that's another thing that needs to be addressed here is we have a run card system now through dispatch where if it's a confirmed fire or confirmed code where somebody is unresponsive or, that run card dictates the amount of people that's needed on that scene. that run card dictates the amount of people that's needed on that scene. So if they know in advance they're on the only heads two, and it comes in as a woods fire, it's obvious that you're going to need more than two people. So automatically, Kennybunk is dispatch, Lyman's dispatch, Bitterford's dispatch, Hymonport's dispatch. And then it's up to the commanding officer to use the resources that are on the road at that point, you know.
Yeah, they went down by with what I call the brush truck, a utility truck, then one of our big trucks, then a pickup truck went by that had lights and sirens on it, then a black pickup truck went by that had lights and sirens on it. So that was who responded, and I guess they set up at Gary's Auto Salvage to try and get ahead of the fire.
What some of these smaller towns inside of, especially York County, are doing now is they're adjusting their run cards so that more towns are coming automatically. And that's, I mean, it's a it's a forfeit to the problem, but at least it gets people and equipment there, you know. But it's unfortunate that, I mean, what tends to happen is, you know, the whole wave of apparatus now comes to Arundel, and if there's another call like Kennybunk, for instance, now the wave goes further out, you know. I don't think this is the right fix right now for Arundel. I really don't. That's that's enough of my gray area.
Simone.
Sam, can you speak in the mic, please?
Okay, I had some notes that I had prepared. I really would like to request the board to eliminate that Article 20 off the warrant because, you know, again, we're having this discussion, and I agree totally that I had it written down here that it's being presented to us as an afterthought, and that, you know, is it a want or is it a need? If it was a need, it should have been presented along with the primary budget. I feel that where the voters look to the planning, the Budget Board and the Selectmen to get the information they need to make their choice, we don't even have the information that we need to make that decision, and I don't believe the board has it. So I think this is just, the information hasn't been fully vetted, the statistics aren't there. We don't need to know if the need is how serious it is. I don't want to put anybody's life on the line, but just looking at the call sheet that he gave us, and I looked at the last couple of news, you know, town report books that had some of the call volumes in there, and they didn't break it down quite as much, but he had a total calls of incidents of six hundred and seventeen. In the 2019-2020 book, if you look at the same type of calls that were listed that he has listed here, and not even all as many broken down, we had six eighteen. Medical calls were three thirty-one that he's given us, they were three sixty-four in that year. Motor vehicle accidents were eighty-four that he's given us, there were ninety that year. The next year, 2018-19, the total calls were five sixty-seven. Medical calls were three twenty-eight. Motor vehicle was a hundred and one. The call volume, I don't think has, you know, increased dramatically in these three years that I've gotten figures for. So I think I'd like to see more of a breakdown. He's saying there are longer transports, you know, maybe this new data that he'll be able to provide us will give us more information on which ones are being transported to Main Med, which ones are local. Out of those medical calls, how many of those are we giving mutual aid, and we're out of town because we're giving mutual aid to Kennybunk? Another question that I had was the breakdown on calls, the information on other, what other towns that are similar in size to us are doing. Kennybunk is two, almost three times as big as Arundel. Bitterford is bigger than us. What's Alfred doing? What's Lyman Dayton doing? I was looking on Lyman Dayton's website. They cover seventy square miles. They cover both towns. They use a twenty-four hour on, twenty-four hour off, and it looks like they have four full-time people that do this. So are there other options that we're not looking at? Maybe instead of staffing, you know, two, like twelve-hour shifts the way we're doing it, maybe we do need to look into like a couple of full-time people that do, or maybe three full-time people, but that do twenty-four hours on, twenty-four hours off, and things like that, or whatever. I think we're not, before we throw this to the public and say, you know, eighty-seven thousand might sound like it's a drop in the bucket when you divide it by all of us, but do we have the information we need before we go down this path? Or should we look at the data and look at other towns and see how they're doing and and at least have more information to bring to the voters? I feel like right now we're just kind of going to the voters and saying, we don't know, you go ahead and flip a coin and see if you want to bring up your taxes or not. I, as a Budget Board member, I know it's my first year on, I don't think this question should be brought up with one-year statistics and no breakdown of information and no, I think, long-term planning on this. I think I agree with Jason, just throwing another position in there doesn't solve the problem and stuff. And being on the fire department, I know that calls do come back-to-back. It's, you know, usually it's storms or a car accident or something will happen, and sure enough, you get another call. But if we provide mutual aid at this point till next year, till we can get more information or more input from what other people are doing or something, or better ideas, I think, you know, I think this needs to be looked at a little bit deeper than just throwing eighty-seven thousand dollars at it. Thank you.
Other comments?
Now I'm conflicted.
So aren't I?
So what's our answer if we do that and the public says, how come you didn't make a recommendation? We say, we don't have enough information? I mean, if that's, if we can say that, then I'm okay with it, you know? Right? Yeah. I mean, I I mean, I tend to agree. I think we certainly need a little bit more information on this, you know. I certainly don't want to sacrifice, you know, care, right? I mean, I don't want to sacrifice that service, but don't want to throw money at it just to throw money at it and say, we got an extra body. And maybe we just, maybe we implore the chief to say, hey, go figure out another way, or go figure out a couple of scenarios, and adding full-time or something like that, and we can kind of watch that and see how that goes and look at it again next year. But, yeah, I I'm almost at the point of what Simone is saying, not even put it in there, you know. You bring up a good point, but I think sometimes I just, I want to put something in front of the town that we have information on, and I, I don't know, sitting here, you know, the townspeople look at the Selectmen to make their decisions, and and I don't want to sit back and say, well, we don't have enough information, we just threw it out there for you guys.
Yeah.
And that, I don't want to do, that's me. I just, I don't want to do that, so.
Okay. Jack?
Yes, a couple of comments. In a looking-forward viewpoint, the chief described new software that he was going to get to replace the software that he has, which frankly produces or scant to frankly lousy information in terms of any detail. I gather that the new software is much better and that he is in the process of acquiring it. So I would suggest that, looking ahead, we sit down and identify the kinds of information that we think we need to make a good decision and make sure that that is captured over the course of the coming year so that if indeed there is justification, that we have some data to support it, because right now this data does not support it. The other point I would make is that if you all go ahead and put this on the warrant article, I'm going to suggest that the Budget Board recommend do not approve. I just cannot see how we can support it with the information we have. Thank you.
I'd rather see it not in there at all than have it go to the town meeting floor and have everyone arguing over it, and if it's voted down, then the the, it could very well cause some hard feelings with the chief, even with the fire department, if it gets voted down. So I'd rather see it not in there at all.
My only fear with that is, and this could just be a vision that I have, but it seems as if police service and fire rescue, a lot of the general public just doesn't have a good, like, I don't know if it's just an information path, or I don't think they understand the ins and outs of what goes on in both of those departments, so to speak, in our town. And I'm just afraid that that his argument would be a one-sided, well, you're not going to get the care that you need if we don't have this third person, and that, to me, is misleading to the public.
Yeah. Simone?
I guess I disagree with you in the fact that the other budgets were brought to you together as one, and I think if he was that serious that he needed the position, why wasn't this vetted through with all the other budget items as part of his line item that, you know, we need to add more people? I feel like it was, we were blindsided last meeting with this kind of a last-minute thing. It's, and I understand that sometimes calls come back-to-back, but I'm just, I think we have the coverage that we can manage for a little bit longer till we see what other options there are that he can look into that maybe per diem, like, you know, Jason was saying, is not the best option for the department. Maybe we do need to get more, another full-time person, but I think we were just, it was just kind of a last-minute thing, and it didn't get through the whole budget like everything else did, and and I totally agree, you know, all you have to do is say, well, all you need is one call that, you know, we're not there to cover, and you know, it's very emotional, you know, to sit there and do that. And I don't, I don't say that I'm either for or against this position. I'm just saying I can't make a good decision and recommend it because I have no information to base it on, and I think the public will be like that, and I kind of lost my train of thought, but I really think that, you know, that I think it's just, it's going to be one of these things that if it's, a decision is made, it's going to be more of an emotional thing, and I don't think that that's, I think the people look to us at the Budget Committee and the Selectmen to say, you know, you've looked this over, you know, so you're saying that we should maybe consider this, and I think, you know, we can't say that, you know, and I just don't think it should be presented at this time. I just don't feel that way. Yeah. I just feel it's almost like saying, well, you know, I think I'm going to buy another car and keep it in my yard because in case my battery doesn't start on the other one, it'd be nice to have, and it would be nice to sit there and have a third person, but at the same time, I don't know that the care is going to make that much of a difference because you're going to be calling in a mutual aid along with this person that's going to arrive there. They're not a, you know, there's some equipment that will come with them, but I don't think it's going to make a big difference as far as, you know, the care that you're going to get one way or the other, but, yeah.
Looking at the schedule, so this month we have seven open shifts. Five of them are during the day. June, we have thirteen open shifts, ten of them are during the day. So the argument that there's more people that want to work days, I don't see how it's proven when ninety percent of the open shifts are during the day. I don't, I don't see how adding another person when we can't even fill the two slots that we have.
Yeah, yeah, he said, yeah, he felt confident that he could fill it.
I don't get where the people are coming from.
So I guess I'm just trying to move this question along and see where we're going to go with it. It's almost like whether we want to put the cart before the horse and see if if we have some sort of straw vote of whether or not we're going to to make any recommendation at all, or not going to make a recommendation. Do the same thing with the with the Budget Board, and then you folks should decide whether or not you're going to leave it on your warrant for consideration moving forward.
Can I vote for this right now as far as including this in the warrant articles, or would that, can I abstain?
Well, I don't know. That would be something that you would have to feel a little bit about. If I was making a suggestion to you, I would say you'd need to abstain.
Then I would, right now, I would voice my support for not including that in the warrant.
I think the first thing we're going to ask for is if the Selectmen are going to support this question. I mean, are we going to?
Right. Right. We're going to put it on the warrant or not?
I'm going to make a motion that we take it, we do not put it on the warrant. I don't think we have enough information, and if we're going to vote on supporting it, I would say that I'm not going to support it. So at this point, I would say my motion is to take it off. We need more information.
Is there a second to that?
They're all thinking.
No, they're not voting.
Yeah, okay. Seconded by Tom. Is there any more discussion? Okay, the motion is to not add it to the town warrant. All those in favor of not adding it to the town warrant? All those opposed? Yeah, it fails because it's two to two. All right.
So now, that would mean that it stays?
It stays, but there would be no recommendation from the Selectmen.
Well, we haven't made a determination.
Yeah, you'd have to make that determination now.
Okay. Do you want to make that your motion?
Yeah, I know where it's going, but that's okay. I'll make a motion that the Selectmen do not recommend this article.
Okay. Do we have a second on that one?
You should have made it the other one. Huh? You should have made it the other one here, motion.
Do we have a second on that one? Okay, motion is made and seconded.
The point is, I don't want to leave it empty. I don't like the townspeople look for the Selectmen to make a determination. We did this a few years ago on something, and there was, you know, there was some dissent among the public. One of the items was a land use ordinance, so I understand that's okay, but when it comes to a budget item, I think that the general public looks, that's why they elect us. They look at us to make a decision whether to recommend or not, and
And your motion is to make no recommendation at all?
No, my motion is to say that we do not recommend this article.
Okay.
That's my motion. I don't want to leave it blank.
And that motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Okay, all opposed. Again, we get two to two.
Okay, on behalf of the Budget Board, I think we've heard all the discussion.
Actually, Sean, if I could butt in for a minute, we haven't heard all of the discussion because there's no microphone up at the end of the desk where Tom and Phil are sitting. So it's been very difficult to get half of the conversation here.
Sorry about that, John.
Okay, basically, the discussion was in regards to whether Okay, basically the discussion was in regards to whether to have it actually on as a, sorry, I'm forgetting the name of it.
Warren.
Warren article. And with Jason abstaining, it was two, two votes to not include it and two votes to include it. So since it had already been voted on to include it onto the warrant, as a warrant article, right now it's staying on as a warrant article. And the board of selectmen have chosen not to make any recommendation because it was a two-two split with Jason abstaining.
And I, no, so my motion was for us to make a no recommendation. We still haven't voted on whether yes or no recommendation whatsoever. So my motion was to, to vote as selectmen recommend, no, that failed. So we still have to decide whether we say yes or whether we leave it blank. We haven't decided that yet.
Okay.
Do you want to wait until we?
Yeah, I'd like, I mean, I know where I stand. Whatever the budget board does isn't going to change, but it'd be nice to know what the budget board, you know.
I mean, my personal feeling is we were involved in the budget process starting in January, pretty much wrapped things up in April and now it is May and this is being brought in. We haven't had time to ask questions. We haven't had time to try and get information from the fire chief. And I think it's kind of like at the last minute. I hate to put it up as a possibility of, you know, oh, you know, people could be, you know, something could happen to some people because of this lack of decision. I think we really need to make a decision and an informed decision. Just with it coming in at the last minute and kind of, I feel that it's, oh, we're just going to be, you know, making people feel worried that they're not going to have coverage without this. And something could happen where they don't get the, the attention that they need with a rescue call. I, I, I just don't feel that way. And I think that we need to basically not recommend this action until the next budget cycle. So we can actually have time to fully, one, for the chief to have time to get additional information in regards to any of the type of options that they could be in regards to split shifts, personnel, however thing he could look at things. Me kind of being from the outside and not knowing all the different options that there are. But I think just to throw it out here at this time, you know, with a couple of weeks before vote is not the time to do it. And we would be doing the town a disservice by not having the time to review and get information and come up with a valued decision on whether to recommend or not recommend. So I would recommend basically a no recommendation from the budget board at this time.
I'd, I'd go a step further than that and hopefully get the budget board on record as not being in favor of going to the town meeting with this warrant article. I don't think we have enough information. I kind of apologize for not being able to make it to the last meeting when the fire chief evidently was making his presentation. But I think this is a last minute deal. We need a lot more information before anybody can make an intelligent decision. And I just don't think we've got enough information and I don't think we should go to the town meeting with this warrant.
I would second that motion. Cause I don't, you weren't there, John, but basically we got one year's worth of data from the chief. And I don't think that's enough to go on.
No, I, I agree with you, Simone. I think it should go back more years. And the, the one year's data that I got a look at, that I, I think I got an email from Keith on it. It, it's just completely insufficient to be making this kind of decision on. I, I think we ought to have a series of meetings with the chief, you know, over the course of next fall and winter and try to come up with a decent solution to the problem. And I don't think we're any, anywhere near going to the town meeting with this type of thing yet.
Just a, a very quick comment. Our town's about 42 to 400 people now, that vicinity. It'll be 5,000 before the end of this decade. Perhaps well before, and it'll be 6,000 in two decades. My prediction. And definitely we will need more people. I, I don't question that. It's just a matter of, of planning it well. But this town's going to grow and there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. Thank you.
I think there will be some growth. I think Jack is right there, but I don't think it's going to be anywhere near the numbers that Jack has just mentioned. Rundle's growth has really been pretty modest over the last 10 years. And I, I, I don't know quite what would change, change that to a, a higher growth rate.
I'm willing to bet a beer on that.
Well, you may be right, Jack. I'll take you up on the bet for the beer anyway.
I just wanted, on the record, that I'm not opposed to, to growth in the fire department. Cause I know for, you know, people are not able to volunteer like they used to. And, and the training required of volunteers makes it very difficult to get people to do that. But I don't think this is the time with just throwing one solution. I think we need to look at other solutions and I don't think throwing this at the public with just one kind of like patch is not going to be the, solving anything. I think it's just going to make it, you know.
So if I may, so if, if the budget board was going to vote on this, would it be no recommendation, a yes recommendation, or a no recommendation?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, it would be a no recommendation because I don't think we have enough information to make a decision on it. And I don't think we should put it out as, you know, no recommendation. I, I think that's just asking for a real fiasco at the town meeting. I, I'd rather be clear about the fact that we feel we need more information on this to make an intelligent decision.
So it would be the budget board recommends no. Is that what you're saying, John?
Really, I'm saying that I, I think the budget board ought to recommend that this does not go to the town meeting this year. If it's decided by the selectmen to go to the town meeting with this warrant, then I think we ought to vote no, that we're not in favor of it.
John, would you like to make a motion? Make that in the form of a motion?
We already made a motion to allow it to go to the town meeting. We already took that motion.
We haven't. We haven't approved this warrant.
Right.
Oh, but I made a motion, I made a motion to take it out and it got voted down.
I, I know, but it's, it's not in here either because we haven't voted to approve the entire warrant. We have to do that. So it's either in or out. And I, I would suggest, I mean, I don't think Jason's got a conflict here. I think he, because he's going to have to vote on the warrant. And it seems to me that he can vote on the entire warrant. And if that's, if he wants to make a motion that he exclude, we exclude 20, I think, I don't see why you can't vote. I don't see a conflict there.
I just don't want any, any, anything to come back to this board because of.
No, I, I understand, but I, I just don't, you know, just because you serve on the fire department, I don't think that that represents enough of a conflict if you can't.
I think as long as you're expressing it and discussing it, you're, you'll be fine, whatever decision you do make.
So I think we need to have a reconsider the vote that we earlier had to tie two-two in order to take up Dan's motion to eliminate Article 20.
Do we need a vote to reconsider?
Yep.
Would it, would it make any more sense rather than voting to not have this on the warrant, that the vote ought to be to put it on the warrant if it's not on the warrant already?
Right now it's on, on the draft warrant that's in front of them. So if they vote on the warrant tonight and they, and they make a motion to remove Article 20 from their warrant, then it's a moot point. It'll be gone. If they decide to, to approve the warrant as presented, then I think we're going to have to have another discussion as to what the votes, if any votes, are on the recommendation of that warrant article.
Okay, so to move this along, I think we.
I'd like to make a motion that we leave the Article 20 in the warrant and have the board of selectmen put it in as no recommendation. Let the voters decide if they want an extra person or not.
Okay, Phil's made that motion.
I'll second it.
And that has been seconded. And it's, the motion was to include it in the warrant, but to put the selectmen, no recommendation.
Right, I would just remove any type of recommendation, identification.
Okay, all in favor of Phil's motion? All opposed? Okay, that doesn't pass. Do we have another motion?
Yep. So my motion would be that we approve the warrant article that was submitted to us tonight with the exception of Article 20.
Okay, and we have a mo, and we have a second on that one to approve the town meeting warrant with the deletion of Article 20. All in favor of that one? And opposed. And that was three to two, so Article 20 will not be in there.
I think we've solved it.
Yeah.
So now it's a moot, now it's a moot point and the budget board doesn't need to vote?
No, correct.
I don't need to cause any confusion. I just didn't want to vote on something that was going to come back like this.
I, I don't, I don't see that. That's just me. I don't, I don't see that.
The, the only, the only housekeeping I, the only housekeeping that I have now would be that I can't get you to sign the warrant tonight. So we'll have to make a, remove Article 20, renumber the last few articles. And then I will reach out to all of you tomorrow and maybe get you either to come in or if I have to, I can go travel to you and get you to sign it.
Okay.
Okay? There is no way to approve it as amended or anything?
We need to sign it, so.
We need to sign it.
Yeah, we've already approved it. We just.
And the last, the last page has your signatures on it after Article 43. If I had thought about it, I could have put it on a separate document, but I didn't do that.
So one of the questions that I had earlier that I kind of forgotten and just thought about this. So at the, at the last meeting between the budget board and the selectmen, you had provided with us a estimated mill rate. And that was, what was it, 1763?
No, mine was based on, it was 1675.
Oh, okay.
John and I would debate and discuss that spiritually, I guess, here. But it, I think the, the difference is how the municipal tax rate is calculated when, when they tell you on the instructions from the state to remove certain things. In our warrant, we, we add those things in, so it's a, but what I do is I just strictly break it down. How much do we have to raise by taxes? And then what are we going to get from revenue? And then what are the differences? I divide it by what our anticipated value is. And that's where I came up with 1675. Now I could be off three, two or three cents one way or the other, but.
And we're at 16?
73.
Right now, we're 16, so it, so it would be an increase of two cents.
Right. And the reason, the reason why only that would be two cents is if $8 million of additional value is calculated in by the assessor. We won't know that until August. So my assumption is it'll be 8 million. It could be 5 million and then we'd be at 17 something, so.
Well, based on, based on a $15 million increase in the assessed value, I'm coming up with a rate of 1702. And I think Keith and I both agree that the difference in the, in his figure or my figure is based on an interpretation of line 13 of the main state standard form for calculating mill rates. And I don't know which of us is correct. I hope Keith is correct because I like his mill rate a lot more than I like mine. But I'm sticking with 1702 until some expert can tell us exactly what should be included on line 13 of that state form.
We won't really know until August when we actually.
Correct. But we, we know it's going to be somewhere between 1675 and 1702. To be on the, to be on the safe side, it'll be somewhere within there. But I just look at what we have to collect and I'm, you know, we've got to collect 8.3 million dollars. So that's what I'm looking at collecting, so.
Okay. So are you all done arguing with that? Any more on that? Thank you very much for joining us, budget board.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comments.
Yeah, actually we, we did need you.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. Approval of the accounts payable warrant.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of accounts payable, any other business?
Yep.
What do you have?
Hey, where do we stand? I know I asked this before, but when we talking about the ribbon cutting, we were going to have, you know, a whole video made and, and that was going to be all presented or put on the website. Where is that? Has that been done yet or?
Video creations has some sort of video that they've done, yes. I have never seen it. It was coordinated through ACT and through Joan, so I'm not quite sure what, what it all consists of.
Cause I, I know at the time, you know, we had talked about, we wanted to put this, we wanted to make this available for the public to see. And, and so I, I guess I'd like to know where that is and, and, you know, take a peek at it.
I'll have to get ahold of Joan too, because if we're going to, once we have the date for the.
Yeah, we're going to come back and videotape.
Yeah, I'm going to come back and videotape the, the time capsule. And I made a recommendation for the time capsule that put right in there that when it's opened in 50 years, that they could, because there's plenty of room in that time capsule. And whoever opens it in 50 years simply adds to it and puts it back for another 50 years.
Well, I'll collect some pictures between now and then.
Oh, all right.
Get some aerial things.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll do some old drone video and we'll put it in there in 50 years.
Hey, Jack, could I meet you at the opening of the time capsule in 50 years to decide who, who gets the free beer?
Any other business?
Motion adjourned.
Motion's made to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second, 808.
All righty, all in favor. There we go.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Keith.